A portion of the city council meeting is conducted.
Recording in progress.
Um, I didn't do the countdown. Are we good though? Okay. A portion of this city council meeting is conducted by teleconference. Let me breathe. And in that council member Barbara is in Boston, Massachusetts. And is participating today by teleconference in accordance with Ralph. And Brown Act, her teleconference location has been identified in the agenda for this meeting. Um, Clementine, if you can do roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barbara.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here for me. And Clementine, if you wouldn't mind sharing with folks how they can participate in public comment, please.
Definitely. So for those of us here in the chamber, mask wearing is recommended and encouraged. And please keep your phones and devices muted in order to prevent audio interference. There are two ways you can virtually participate in today's meeting using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile. Mobile device or calling into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom using your computer, smartphone or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. And an up to date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at Monterey.org slash public meetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and will call on each public speaker in the order of hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that is established and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com slash city of Monterey with about 10 seconds delay. And on Comcast channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving public comment.
Okay. I would now like to request that councilmember Barbara respond to the following questions. Councilmember Barbara, can you read or can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Was the agenda posted 72 hours prior to the meeting at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No.
Can everyone clearly hear councilmember Barbara?
Yes.
The Brown Act requires that any vote taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting be taken by roll call. And we will go ahead and go ahead to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And I'll ask councilmember Smith to kick us off here.
You bet. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And before we begin public comments, I think we're going to start a new trend here. I understand that somebody in the chambers has a birthday tomorrow. So. If you couldn't tell by body language, we're going to go ahead and sing happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear heart. Happy birthday to you. Woo. All love, all love. Yes.
Looks like an embarrassed 39 year old.
I won't out anybody. Alrighty. Um, and with that, we'll go to public comments for items not on today's agenda. We'll go ahead and start in the chamber. Hello, Mr.
Yes. Good afternoon, Tom Rowley, President Fisherman's Flats Homeowners and Residents Association. Uh, we had our annual meeting last night. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have somebody from the staff give a presentation on the housing element. Uh, however, I did participate in the survey that was done and I said the faulty, it was a faulty survey. And I don't know how you, when you have a faulty survey, you're going to wind up with faulty results. So I just passed that on to you. I've. Mentioned this to Kim Cole before. And I think you've got problems developing when you start with a survey that's faulty, you're going to wind up with faulty results. So I don't know what the draft, which I believe you're going to need a draft within. May, June, uh, I. I don't see you coming up with something that's decent. There's one thing that's totally ignored in the survey that I did. Any mention of the jobs, housing balance. That used to be one of the principal concepts in planning. I've been through two previous cycles with the Monterey general plan. And so I made some suggestions to the staff. I've talked to, I talked to you Tyler, I've talked to Ed. Anyway, uh, it's going to be a tough road to hill to come up with a reasonable draft on the housing element based on the survey that I've done. Secondly, um, we have a problem in our neighborhood. Foothill School, which was closed as a school is now a location of 180. K through two students, which all of the students are delivered through our neighborhood to the front of the school. It's created a parking hassle. Uh, we mentioned it, the PK Diffin Ball. Uh, there hasn't been a solution. We had the representative from the school, um. Charter School also Monterey County Office of Education has staff also renting out space at Foothill School. So it's campus is still being used, but not as a school as a char, it's only as a charter school. So we're going to be working on that. And we hope to, uh, get some support from the city. But this, uh, school district needs some help in making changes to the way. 180 students are delivered every day and picked up every day. The other thing is, um. Well, the housing element, you've got a tough road to hoe coming up with something reasonable on the direction you're taking. So good luck on that. Thank you.
Hi there. You've seen me before. My name is Stephen Lucas and brought some more books for you. Um, a technical review of the biological effects of non-ionizing radiation had ad hoc committee. Um, created by the United States Office of Science and Technology. It's a working group. And they were established in 78. To investigate the Mazer attack on the US Embassy, Embassy in Moscow, the microwave attack. And so all these biological effects turned up as a result of that attack. And so people were really scared of this technology that's here now. It's not brand new technology. And, uh, and later on. A commission, uh, the recommendations in this. Uh, turned to turned into the biological effects of electromagnetic radiation. So money was authorized. The results were. They had it wrong. Safety factor of 10 was given to microwave. Instead it was seven. So they were off by a safety factor of three. The Bureau of Navy. Uh, medicine was really upset about that and was furious. They cornered the person who came up with that factor and he said, I just pulled it out of the sky. So it's, but I'm not talking about human health. I'm talking about all of biology, biological effects, wildlife. Pines, oaks and so forth. We're allowed to talk about that. I'm not talking about health as far as like vitamins and things like that. These are adverse biological effects that could affect otters. I sent a very detailed email about that to you about 2:30. So you want to review that? Um, I also sent it to the congressman and other key stakeholders involved, the US Navy, since they have some comments about, uh, what's going on and so forth. So. All the key stakeholders are now informed. The otters will likely have a cataracts event, um, en masse right away once exposed. And when the. Lobe comes out of the cell tower and hits the water, it will scatter across the water amplified and hit those otters. Not only that, but they found lesions that will probably break out on those otters as well. And the mechanism by which those lesions occur. I took that book to MPCC to the chemistry department. And the professor there said, this is stunning. This is scientifically sound. Where did you get this book? I'm an ex Navy intelligence analyst. I can find it. If it's in writing, I'll find it. So I'm telling you that we need to get together and protect these otters. Not just otters, dolphins, whales. It's a big part of our economy. And when that electromagnetic field multiple crosses the ocean like that and hits those animals. And, uh, it will fundamentally change them. The Monterey Bay Aquarium knows. I let them know because I want them to know. When they see this happening, they don't just call it sea otter wasting syndrome and don't know what the cause is. Cataracts and lesions in otters, you got to look to those cell towers. So that's my, uh, that's, that's my speech for today. And the last book, Soviet Mazer Research. Microwave Amplified Stimulated Admission Radiation. That's what those cell towers are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Lightfoot here, LennonMurderTruth.com. Say I notice your clock downtown by the depot is a five minutes slow. Also, your police department is upside down. And your court system. About as corrupt as I've seen, and I've seen a lot of corruption in different courts, different police departments. If you want to visit my website, you're likely to run into a chapter called. The problem with Panetta. He tilts his large head sideways 25 degrees to his right when he talks to you. He doesn't want you to see him for what he really is. He thinks he's smarter than you. And has more inside information than you. And that you are a P and that he can exploit and fool. He thinks you need him. To decide for you what is best for you. And that you don't know better. He may be angling to run for president, I've heard. He looks like an old cabbage patch doll with narrow set beady eyes that seem cross eyed somehow. His face caving into a. It's center Leon Panetta is a CIA brand of corrupt a-hole. As far as you and I are concerned, he's former CIA chief, by the way. He's the reason the people of Monterey are meek, sheepish, quiet. And keep their heads down and work so hard like you all do. Harder than you should where your government not so corrupt. His brand of corruption has scared off. All of you into behaving like sheep. He's apparently very much. A part of the Italian mafia, the locals will tell you. Have run Monterey and Santa Cruz for decades. Look at your DA, Pacioni, for example. And Dean Flipple before that. He sits at the top of the political pyramid here, former White House aide for several presidents and very much a part of the deep state and the swamp. He is absolutely morally corrupt and may have even. Murderous plans where I am concerned. In my opinion, he has corrupted. All that is below him. And that's the entire Monterey County government and police and court system. I know. My hero status as the messenger. With hard evidence that proves his former boss, Richard Nixon and others arranged. For horror writer Stephen King to murder John Lennon has fleshed him out of the woodworks. Since I became a threat to the powers that be. He thinks he has. The right to weaponize his courts and police to terrorize me. Just as if he was a Soviet stooge. I hear he has ties to the Chinese Communist government, by the way. And his son, nepotistic son. Has no business hanging onto all of our purse strings with his father, CIA corrupt trying to kill me. Ever since early 2019, when I inherited enough money to fix my teeth and get a new website, Vanar Police and Courts have been molesting me like. Old men in black robes gang raping the hero. In just over three years between Santa Cruz and Monterey, Panetta has set me up twice corrupted over nine officers in Monterey and three in Santa Cruz. In Monterey, nine officers actually provably lied in the course of issuing me six citations. Not only did they all lie, videotape proves they lied. When I later tried to subpoena these officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Robert Ashmore. Live on Villa Del Ray, Monterey region area. The Architectural Review Committee. In October of 2019. Issued a resolution, okay, in a two story dwelling next to my house. Two. Exceptions they made were the bottom half of the second story windows were to be opaque. The other was that no light was to shine on my. House from their outside lighting. And. I went to the building department and they said, that's a planning department restriction. We don't handle it. Very nice young lady over there. Said, oh, let me dig up the resolution and she read it and she put it in on their punch list for a final approval. The final approval was about a month and a half ago. The windows weren't opaque. I went to the building department, the building department said. Not our deal. I said, well, it was put in there and they said. Not our deal. Okay. Go to the code enforcement officer. They gave me. Christie Sabdo's. Number I called her. She called back the following day and said, I will go talk to. The homeowner and get back to you. Two weeks later, she gets back to me and says, well. They can't find any film that sticks to the window and they're working on it. I asked her if she'd put a deadline on it. And she said, no. I normally would have gone to the Architectural Review Committee first, but their meeting is tomorrow. So I just wonder why there is not a. Connection between planning. Architectural review. Building. Where they get all this stuff straight. I don't know how. They got a final approval on the house. But it wasn't according to what it should have been. I thank you for any input you can give me on this. And I realize this is public comment. You're not going to say anything back to me, but I thank you for listening. And I thank you all for watching. You actually all made eye contact. It's very great. I appreciate that very much. And appreciate you for the job you do. Thank you.
Good to see you, Bob.
Good to see you.
I saw staff taking notes too. So I'm sure you can connect with them if they have any other follow up for you.
Hi, um, I'm Jean Rash speaking as the president of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association. We just wanted to thank you for all, all your work on the wireless ordinance and the creativity. Put toward the solution and, um, we're, we're here in support and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rick Goldinger, resident of Monterey. Uh, like to talk briefly about traffic signals. Uh, I have. Sent emails, phone, made phone calls. Uh, for a little over a year now, I've been bringing this up with. Individuals. Uh, staff individuals, um. And so far, nothing has changed. There's several traffic signals in the city of Monterey. Uh, that aren't working as they should, at least in my opinion. And you know, some of this is pretty selfish. Um, I, I, when I come home. Well, when I leave for work every morning, when I come home at night. I sit at the, uh, the intersection of, uh, Soladad and Munrus. And. Myself, um, along with many, many other cars, sit at that intersection. Uh, and wait. And wait and wait. Uh, and. Eventually after the pedestrian signals have run their course. Uh, traffic is allowed to flow again. The, the, the intersection sits empty. To, and so, uh, again, a lot of this is selfish. Uh, I just want to get home. I just want to get to work. Uh, but I sit there and I wonder, you know, how, how much greenhouse gas are we just sitting pumping into the atmosphere? While we all wait for something to happen at these intersections. Uh, Soladad and Munrus. Pacific and Soladad. Scott and Pacific. Many of the lights up and down Pacific here, uh, the same, same issue. Uh, I, I've been paying attention to this for a long time. Trying to get something to happen. Uh, the pedestrian signals are triggered at every. Cycle of the lights. And so, uh, again, whether there are pedestrians or not, so we, like I said, we, we all just sit there in our cars idling. While we're waiting for some, you know, the next, the next change of the light to happen. So. Uh, I'm hoping that if I. Bring it to your attention here that, that something will happen. It almost seems like it's something that has been a policy change that. We're just going to allow pedestrians to have the right of way at every intersection. Uh, but that's what those buttons are for. Um, you know, like I said, uh, we're all just sitting there waiting while we, uh, pollute the environment, waiting for the light to change. And so I'm hoping we can change that. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Tina Wong. I've been having problems with the police department. So the gentleman that was saying corruption in the police department, I'm kind of in agreement. I put a police report in in 2020. And I talked to Ethan Andrews. Um, what was his name? Uh, yeah, Ethan Andrews. And I personally told him about a prostitute. I'm a single parent. I'm raising my daughter. I don't want her seeing that stuff. We live in low income. And he took that police report personally over the phone because it was COVID and nobody wanted to. Get in contact with anybody. I unfortunately don't believe like that, but that's fine. Um, the problem is. He lost that report or he didn't. Follow through with the report. I tried to talk to the chief of police. I made several attempts in 2020. To schedule an appointment to talk to the chief. He's here now, but he was never there when I needed to talk to him as a resident. About the prostitute that keeps on going. She never got charged with anything. She roams around. She gets. She's involved with the police. You guys need to start doing an investigation. Um, because just recently, about a week ago, I talked to, um. I talked to. Another gentleman, Pinkus, the officer. And he gave me the runaround, never told me anything of what was going on. He pulled up the reports, all the reports that I put in. He couldn't find that report. So Ethan Andrews, he lost the report or he decided since he was seeing the prostitute, he didn't need to follow through with that. Situation. Well, I have a daughter and we were seeing a lot of activity and I could personally give you. Citizens and residents in this area that are seeing that chick. I had to go to the low income housing and I had to. Get rid of her myself. And I even have a piece of paper here talking about that. Because, uh, I have a prostitute living next to me in HUD housing. I tried to speak with Chief Dave. Hover, I'm not pronouncing his name correctly. I'm sorry. He was always unavailable. I spoke with Ethan Andrews, a lieutenant. I gave all the information to him. But he never gave me any indication he would arrest her. I told him I never gave me. I, um, I'm sorry. Um, I told him I believed she was seeing police persons. I did not say I thought it was the chief, but I did think it was the chief. I believe it is Ethan also. But I not, I got no results. I need an investigation going on this. I have a daughter. She's 18 now. But we've been seeing this chick. She lives in, um. Seaside now, but she, her boyfriend that she had a baby with is right next to me still, and he might be mistreating that child. But she's not a good parent either. Please investigate. He's not a good cheat. He was never around. He should get fired. And I put the police report in and everybody on this list needs to get fired. You need to get fired. You did a terrible job.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, kind of came in her on a whim and that was, that's a difficult act to follow. I was born and raised in Las Vegas, Nevada. My best friend's mom was a cocktail waitress who worked the night shift on the strip. And when we did school projects together, she would take us to the strip. And as long as we were back at her cocktail station, every hour on the hour, we were able to roam the strip as we pleased. And as someone who grew up encountering prostitution in that situation, it does kind of warp your view of sexuality as a child. So tough cookie to crack, but we should probably make it so that children don't have to see it. That's not why I came up here. I came up here to talk about trees. What I love most about the city that I've come to love is the trees of Monterey. And one stands afar above the rest and it's right behind this building. It's this Monterey Cypress behind the jail. I've never seen anything like it. Amazing tree. Couple of weeks ago, after I got a gale warning, I came down here and found a tree or a branch that had broken off that tree and I took it home. And I've seeded a bunch of the cones and I've got about 70, 75 sprouts from that cone. So if anyone would like a piece of that tree, as I will proudly take with me, you can raise your hand and next Tuesday, I'll bring that many in small two-inch pots for you. Anyone want one? One, two, three. Mayor? No?
Sure, I'll take one.
Four?
Yeah.
Anyone else? I've got them. I've got 70 of them.
Why don't you bring a few extra too, just in case we have folks that are not here that may want some.
All right, I'll do that next Tuesday.
Which Tuesday? Our council meeting is the following Tuesday.
Eighteenth of April.
Eighteenth of April.
The eighteenth. Okay. I'll have them here then then. I'll see what I can do. I've got somewhat of a green thumb, but that's a, that's a tall order.
What's your name?
Nick.
Nick.
Nick Ariceto.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I tried to get the engineering department to take me up to Iris Canyon. So I, as a citizen, can see what this sediment removal project at Iris Canyon will entail. So far, I've been put on hold. You are to vote approval of this project next city council meeting. So I ask that you ask the engineering department to take you there so you can ascertain what you are going to approve of. I would also like to attend. Seventy-five trees will be cut when trees have recently been found to actually help preserve streams from erosion and overflow. According to Willstone Trust Foundation, trees create an important buffer zone, reducing the amount of runoff that enters the river directly during periods of heavy rain. This runoff carries sediment and potentially other pollutants. Tree roots stabilize riverbanks and can reduce the rate of the bank erosion. And yet this giant project will take down 75 trees, approximately 120,000 pounds of oxygen a year and poison the wetlands with herbicides to kill the non-natives and all the wildlife affected by these poisons will never be studied by the Monterey to find out their true effects on insects and birds and all the other forms of life. I thought we had done away with herbicides and pesticides, but apparently not with our planning department. Our planning department is the most tree-cutting department I've ever witnessed in a town. And I'm amazed how many projects are okayed without anybody knowing about it. It's got to stop and it stops with you. So please do due diligence and go to Iris Canyon because you're going to vote on this next city council meeting. And it's horrendous. They're also, and that's all I have to say for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak during a public comment for things that are not on the today's agenda? Let's go on, online, please.
Yes, first we have a telephone caller with the telephone number ending in 902. So if you could, please identify yourself and go ahead.
Yes, my name is Nina Beatty. I first wanted to note that today is the anniversary of Martin Luther King's murder. I was in elementary school at Monterey Vista at the time. And the attorney for the King family and a friend of Martin Luther King conducted a 30-year investigation into his assassination. 1999 Lloyd Jowers and other co-conspirators were brought to trial in a civil action suit on behalf of the King family. Seventy witnesses set out the evidence of a conspiracy that involved J. Edgar Hoover and the FBI, Richard Helms and the CIA, the military, Memphis Police and organized crime. And the jury took just an hour to find for the King family. The transcript of that trial is available, the 13th juror, to allow the public to become part of that jury and read through all the evidence. And also Mr. Pepper wrote a book called The Act of State, which has continued his investigation in the situation. Terrible, terrible day. The second thing I'd like to bring up is the flyer that was put in at least my family's property tax bill. And it's a dollar bill and it says, where do my tax dollars go? And I was shocked to see that cities like Monterey only get six cents out of every property tax dollar. That amounts to $60 for every $1,000 of property tax bill. This does not pay for city services. It doesn't pay for the roads, the sewers, the police, the fire, all the things that the city does for residents. And at the same time, schools get 60 cents out of every dollar. So $600 per thousand dollars of property tax revenue goes to schools. A person's community and their home, that is the most, that's, that's where everything starts. And I urge the city council and staff to get with the League of California Cities and demand change from our state legislators to readjust the allocations so our cities have a sturdy financial foundation and don't have to continually go cap and hand to all of us and to any grant funder people to get funding for vital programs. This is ridiculous and I think you should be loud and clear to the public about the realities of the property tax situation. Residents are not paying their way and that's because Sacramento legislators set up the system. The system needs to be redone completely so that the cities, particularly the large cities, I think of cities like Stockton that have had such difficult time. This is why this needs to be fixed. Thank you.
It was pleasant. The ringing though is good charm. It's different. Is that a new clock?
Next speaker is Katia Gutierrez.
Go ahead. Hello, my name is Katia Gutierrez and I am a program manager for Sunstreet Centers. And I am here with two of our youth who are going to go ahead and speak after me. But we just kind of wanted to thank the city of Monterey for updating its, its TRL to include flavor tobacco. We think that it's very important in order to reduce underage usage. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and end my public comment right here by just thanking Monterey. And also one more thing, we went to Monterey High School and we had Monterey High students pledge to be tobacco-free and we had a banner and, and, and I wish I was in person so I can show you all. But with that being said, again, I just extend my gratitude and I'll go ahead and let the student speak when it's their turn. Thank you.
So will they be speaking together on your login? They could go ahead if so.
Uh, no, they're, they're speaking under Santos.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. Then next we have Santos.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Santos. I am.
And I am Andy Garcia. We are here representing the Safe Teens Empowerment Project, a program of Sunstreet Centers. Our goal is to prevent drug or alcoholic usage among minors. We do, we would like to thank the city of Monterey for including the flavored ban in tobacco and inhalation parties. They were tobacco products type in negativity impacting our local youth for a while now. We must admit that even after the ban, we still see tobacco products around the city. But it is much less than before. I would like to share that we recently collaborated with Luzon's Projects to do a cleanup in Monterey, in Sabina Beach in honor of State Down Tobacco Campaign. In my opinion, it is important to be a part of these efforts and encourage the community to get involved because I do not want to see our community be filled with trash, harmful chemicals coming from cigarette butts and other tobacco products. Thank you.
And is that all for your call? Is Andy Garcia saying more or was that the end?
Yeah, it's all.
Thank you so much for your comment. And Mr. Mayor, there are no further speakers.
Okay, and with that, we will go to the consent. There's been a request to pull items number two and number three. Does the council wish to pull anything else on the consent agenda? Anybody in the public? In the chamber? Yep, we got number one, one as well. Okay, so we'll pull items number one, two and three. Anybody online?
No, no hands raised.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent minus numbers one, two and three?
So man.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Let's go ahead and do real call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
And that's a yes for me. Let's go to item number one. Do we want to start with you, Ms. Moffett, to see what your concerns are regarding number one? If you want to go up to the mic for us, please, that would be helpful.
I believe that, I believe that is the increasing the tax. It is not that one. Okay.
Nope.
Beg your pardon.
Number one are the minutes from the last council meeting.
And let me go to item number two and make sure that I'm not item number two. Okay. Isn't that reading the repealing and replacing Monterey City Code Wireless Communications, isn't that?
That's number two.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you want to speak to that one.
I think it's number three that I wanted to pull as well. I wanted to pull number two and number three. I think both of we, we need to have a lot more conversation before we go ahead with these two items.
Okay, so before we get to item number two and number three, we'll finish up number one and then we'll call, call you back up for public comment for those items. Does anybody wish to speak on, on item number one in the chamber? Anybody online?
No hands are raised.
Okay.
Sir, make a motion to approve consent item one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
And that's a yes for me. Moving, moving on to item number two, the wireless ordinance. And I will pass it off to our city attorney, Chrissy Dobby, for a brief, brief comments and introduction of the item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of an ordinance. We've had multiple public participation in the wireless subcommittee and a lot of work done by that committee, a lot of work done by the planning commission and the city council as well as staff, and we appreciate everybody's efforts. What we have before you is from the last direction to require a 100-foot setback in R1 zones and in the PC-zoned areas that cover Skyline Forest. That amendment was made and so if it passes tonight, that would be what would be effective in 30 days.
Perfect. Are there any questions by the council?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Robert.
So I just needed clarification on the, the wording of within 100 feet. Does that, it says placement of a wireless communications facility within 100 feet of any parcel either in the R1, but not in the Skyline Forest, but not governed by a specific plan requires an effective prohibition showing. So I'm just, my question for clarification is the within 100 feet, does that mean that somebody could come in and, and, and put in a proposal for less than 100 feet? I'm just trying to get clarification of the wording.
It, it could be proposed. Oh, sorry.
Yes, something could be proposed in, with less than 100 feet. It would require an effective prohibition showing though to have that approved.
So can you explain to me, help me to understand? So when you say it's a, it's a setback that we discussed last time of, of 100 feet. It's so a setback is just within 100 feet or the setback is that the, the minimum of the 100 feet in and out? That's, that's where I'm trying to get a clarification.
The draft prohibits placement within 100 feet of an R1 zone or a PC-designated property in Skyline Forest. If there needs to be a placement because the wireless provider is able to show an effective prohibition, then it would be approved.
Okay.
And it comes back to the inability to implement a 100% ban on placement of wireless facilities. But this is a buffer intended to balance aesthetic concerns with wireless facility placement.
Okay, Councilmember Robert, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, let's take it out to the public. We're going to go with two minutes. So if anybody wants to speak on this item, we're going to go ahead and start in the chamber. So if you want to go ahead and step, step up to the mic, please.
You need to ban 5G from our city. So you need to do everything you can. We have under a constitution a right to protect our health. Christopher Porter, PhD, a longtime US government scientist now retired, submitted a comprehensive review of the scientific research in a major cellphone brain cancer lawsuit where he concluded that the evidence on the association between cellular phone use and the risk of glaucoma, glioma in adults is quite strong. And in my opinion, RF exposure probably causes gliomas and neuromas and given the human, animal and experimental evidence, I assert that to a reasonable degree of scientific certainty, the probability that RF exposure causes gliomas and neuromas is high. So imagine what these bundled antennas are going to do all over our city. You really have a responsibility to your citizens to have the guts to say, we have a right to say no to dangerous technologies. And if you don't do that, all your loved ones and you and all of us here are going to continue to submit to this corporate tyranny.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, let's go online, please.
Yes, we've got Ms. Beatty.
This is Nina Beatty. The first thing I'd like to say is that I don't understand. Mayor Williamson, your employer will benefit substantially from the changes in this ordinance because it exempts government agencies from the wireless ordinance. The Navy can put cellular antennas on private property, on city property in the right-of-way, in a contract with the city or with whoever, with PG&E. And there is no ability of the city to enforce any, any provisions in the wireless ordinance. And so I requested that you recuse yourself and that the city evaluate what the situation is going forward. There, the, the city staff should have instructed you to recuse yourself from all these discussions and votes due to this potential or actual conflict of interest, but they didn't. So we're in sort of a strange zone right now. The Navy already uses AT&amp;T's network sites and has said as much. So that's number one. Number two is these new exemptions that staff added. That were not part of the wireless subcommittee. They allow government agencies to be exempted from all review by the city. That includes MPUSD. So anything on city property or by people's homes or in a park. Those are all exempted. If as long as the government agencies involved, they're exempted. And that's a new thing in this ordinance and it overturns virtually the whole ordinance. Because we have a lot of government agencies that may want to put antennas in the city on the rest of ours property. They also exempt other wireless facilities that were never exempted before. And larger equipment is allowed, so uglier, more visual in-your-face equipment is allowed. And they the wireless subcommittee refused to allow wireless equipment on the utility lines. Because it's a stress, it's a wind load on the lines, it increases fire danger. But staff inserted vague language. So I'm asking you to not approve this ordinance for the second reading because of the irregularities.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Now, I'll just clarify for the record, I had a conversation with the attorneys at the Naval Postgraduate School and there is no conflict of interest or ethics violations with me. I'm voting on this because there's no material benefit for me in my employment at MPS, so I won't be recusing myself. With that, any other questions or comments from the council? No. Okay, I just want to, before we go to avoid, just want to give appreciation to the community for. Working with us on on coming to this conclusion and the council for working with the community on trying to. Find a solution that can get us by for now. We know that this isn't going to be the end of the conversation and. There will be greater dialogue as we move forward in time. But just wanted to give appreciation as we close this book for now and 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 move on to other items. So with that, I'll go ahead and ask for roll call vote, please.
I was there. I think we need.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to. Take a vote for the second reading approval of the second reading for the wireless ordinance.
A second.
Okay, any other questions, comments in the council? Perfect. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
And that's a yes for me. We'll move on to item number three, cost recovery for appeals and historic preservation. And I'll pass it to Hans for a brief introduction.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading of an ordinance that we passed where we had the first reading. Two weeks ago, I'm curious to learn more about the concerns expressed by Ms. Moffett and Ms. Beatty.
If you're okay with it, Hans, maybe we can go to public comment and then we can come back to staff if the presentation is needed. Yes. Okay, so we'll open up to public comment.
We have, we don't have, we can't have three minutes on this?
Three minutes is permitted.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay. As you know, I recently appealed an appalling plan of community hospital to cut down an Oakland forest at Ryan Ranch for a parking lot. This plan increases traffic by 6,000 new daily trips daily to that area and the plan is called a mitigated. Negative environmental declaration. In other words, somehow miraculously, they are going to mitigate the traffic woes already jammed up to the gills. At five o'clock as folks head back to Salinas. Someone had to do something and so they filed an appeal. That someone was me, a 75-year-old low-income working two jobs to make ends meet elder. Who paid the sum with hard-earned money, so we might have a chance to tell Chomp to take that million-plus parking lot money. And develop a mass transit plan instead. How are people going to help and support you in your decisions to keep Monterey Monterey? If you prevent us from doing so with such outrageous fees? I know you get pressure from the invisible forces coming to this area to build, build, build and traffic and trees and water be damned. But people like us who stand before you are your strength to say no. And our community demands it is for us to preserve it. That's why we have hired and voted for you. So I'm hoping you will not allow these fees to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, let's go online, please.
Yes, we have Ms. Beatty. Go ahead, please.
Yes, this this is Nina Beatty. When you first, when the staff first brought this forward on the the seventh of March. Appeal fees were not part of this and then all lo and behold, the second city council meeting, appeal fees appeared, but they were buried in the list. Excuse, excuse me. And then a new fee was added for the Disabled Access Appeals Board, which has never had. A fee at all. That means when people are not able to access a building or service or program, there's an access barrier. They were able to go to the Disabled Access Appeals Board and say this is and they wrote a letter and it was the city said no. They could go to the the board and and appeal this the situation. Now they're going to have to pay $881.81. To appeal any decision made by the city. What's more, the appeal fees in general for land use projects. It's really not clear what the actual fee is going to be because the agenda report says the fee is going to be 100% of actual cost. Whereas the staff, the in the staff report and in the 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 actual fee list, it says it's going to be. $795 in the fee schedules what it says. So is it $6,945 to appeal to the city council or is it $795? Because it's very unclear. Raising the fees at all, there's 690, basically $695 to appeal from the planning commission to the city council now. Is exorbitant anyway and very, very costly and raising the fees further either to 795 or 6,945. Is going to raise, make it completely out of reach for many people, for the ordinary people of the city. Now, the lawyers in the fancy suits that come to the meetings periodically for various land use projects and the big. Big firms that that are on the peninsula, that won't be an issue for them. That's not, that's not a problem. But usually it's an environmental problem that the public's raising. And those voices will be shut out when you increase the fees. So I'm asking you to not raise the fees for land use projects. And certainly not institute a new fee for the Disabled Access Appeals Board. That's unconscionable and it may be considered an unlawful surcharge under ADA. When people are denied access and they have to pay to try to get access. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there are no further hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and get questions from the council at this time?
Um, yeah, there were just a couple of comments there. I wanted to get some clarification on the fee, what the fees actually are that seem to be. In dispute and then isn't there a hardship waiver that is part of our? Could you speak to that? So in the case of somebody for whom paying the appeal would be a genuine hardship? What's that process look like?
To briefly recap, the prior city council meeting adopted a resolution approving the fee schedule and so those fees will go into effect in July. That's not what's before the council tonight. What's before the council tonight is the policy decision on what percentage of cost recovery do you want? On these items such as the historic preservation reviews, Mills Act. Those types of things had no fee, I believe, and now. The second reading of this ordinance would. Require 100% cost recovery for those historic rezones. It also implements a new fee for administering 100% cost recovery. The fee was already passed. For the appeals hearing board, the disabled access appeals board and the building. Access, building appeals board. So whenever we have those hearings, sometimes they involve revocation of massage establishment permits. They're very intensive proceedings, almost like little. Trials, so witnesses are called, the appeals hearing board has to deliberate. There's a lot of staff time. And effort involved in those are they're quite extensive and up until. Now, there's never been a fee collected or reimbursement obtained for those, so. The what the P, the what's proposed is legal, the policy decision for the council is. Do you want the general taxpayer population to subsidize private party appeals? That's that's really the question. So if you're going to appeal a historic zoning permit. Do you want that person who's appealing it to carry that cost or do you want that spread out and subsidized by the general fund? With respect to the hardship waiver, we do have a hardship waiver in place now for. Unrelated items when you're issued an administrative citation. So let's say you are drinking alcohol in public and you're issued a $100 administrative citation. Or on the flip side, you have a short-term rental violation for $1,000. If you are unable to pay that, you can apply for a hardship fee waiver and that is built into the process. And if it's granted, you don't have to pay. Otherwise, you do need to pay upfront before your appeal can be processed. What this ordinance again does tonight, sorry to reiterate, is it's just allocating what percentage of cost recovery you would like to see for these types of items. So the the planning fees generally before this were. Historically 20%, then they went down to 10% and in the first reading, the council passed 100% as its policy in in recovery. And so it does that for the various appeals hearing boards and various planning fees and historic rezone fees. And I and I should also add that. The Disabled Access Board hearings are few and far between, but they're not limited to disabled people to the extent that was suggested. So for example, next Tuesday, I believe, or maybe next Monday, we have a hearing before that board. Brought by a member of the public who says that the recreation trail is. So crowded with bicycles and people that we need to develop a whole nother lane of travel to for disabled persons and the appellant is is not disabled. Similarly, there might be someone in the construction industry who doesn't agree with. The building officials interpretation of how something might need to be constructed to comply with the ADA and they too would appeal to this board. So. It's it's applied the same to everybody. Options we could explore if you were interested would be a hardship waiver or. Refunding the fees to a prevailing party, something of that nature. But if this were to pass tonight, this is the second reading, it implements the 100% cost recovery policy on on those items.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. So what's the average appeal cost? What 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 that average look like and what's the history of the number of appeals in the last year?
I don't know. Are you talking about planning appeals or?
Just in general, because if we're looking at every single one of the appeals that we're talking about and in each of the. Designations, I'm just curious that what's the average appeal price for the building? What's the average appeal price? Because I'm, I want to hear what the what the average numbers are as opposed to the percentage that we were trying to recruit.
The fee structure requires that we. Get reimbursed only for the actual time expended. So we're not making money off appeals. We're reimbursing staff time. And. So those that analysis was in the agenda report prior to this meeting when the resolution was adopted. I guess we can hold it up and see. The cost study analysis for each of those fees that were implemented and that's done by.
I can let it up. I have the other one. It was the last, last meeting that it was on?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I can let it up if it was the last meeting.
And also, as Chrissy pointed out, if you want to appeal an administrative citation, that's $100. If you want to appeal a short-term rental violation, that could be 100, it could be $1,000. So if you appeal that. You have to pay the fee first and then you go in front of the appeals board. So it's it's kind of hard to say what's the average cost for an appeal fee because. It really depends on on the type of. Citations that that you like to 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 appeal, if I say it correctly.
Yes, that's fine. I'll pull that up a little bit of that so I can figure that out. And then do you have, what's the history of the last year, the number of appeals? Or was that in that same report?
How many appeals?
I'm not sure. Potentially. The planning department might have. No, we don't. We don't have the information available today on the number of planning appeals. I can say the appeals hearing board, it depends on. The time of year or you know, if if the. If we're having a lot of appeals for massage establishment permits or things of that nature, I'd say maybe five or six per year.
Well, and I know Councilmember Barber was on. The appeals board before she got onto council, so I'm not sure. Did you ever have anything?
I never was called.
I think she's on disabled access.
No, I wasn't on disabled. I was on the appeals one before prior to getting on, coming on council and I never was called. So I didn't know whether it's just that.
Appeals board that we're talking about.
Are we talking about all, all three of the different boards?
This is much broader than just the appeals hearing board. Implementing or the policy would be to receive 100% of cost time, cost recovery for all appeals, whether they're. Oh, I applied for a use permit and it was denied and I want to appeal that from the planning commission to the city council. That would have an appeals fee in connection with that or appealing. A massage establishment revocation that would, a separate board, a separate appeal, so. This is.
Okay, I would just be curious. I mean, just information I'd like to get even after this, the number of appeals that we are averaging per year and what it looks like, even in each, each one. I'm just curious. I'm just be curious about that. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have questions?
Probably just, I think the staff is 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 requesting a vote on this as the second reading. But I think fundamentally, the the question is. Do we want to increase the recovery? Because currently, as the staff report. Indicates in here, the existing policy is to recover 10% of the city costs in administering the appeals. But now we are being asked, should we recover 100% of the appeal? And and so it's a philosophical policy question. So I just want to say that I I agree with that, that it should be bracketed to the actual cost. The 100% of the cost for the appeal makes sense to me. Because if someone is so motivated. That they are appealing it, then there are costs that need to be recovered by city staff and as the city attorney has outlined, it it might be something very simple and straightforward or it might be very. Complexous as an example of a appeal of a hearing at the planning commission. So that would come to us, but if there is some type of a an appeal, it could require. Quite a bit of time, information, outside counsel, and so the recovery can be substantial. So it's difficult to set a firm amount. On every one of the appeals. So I just think that it is, as the council has stated and delivered. It's a policy question and I think it should be 100% recovery. And I think it's also fair to say that those that are motivated for the appeal should not expect that the cost of that process is borne by. The rest of the city residents that are then being deprived of potential services because it's a amount of money. So instead of 10%, I think it should be 100. And I think we we have a duty to protect those that live in the city that should not be over overborne with that appeal. That they have nothing to do with and no interest in. So I think it's about protecting city assets and representing the entire community. So I think it should be 100%.
So and just to provide a little bit of clarification, in the ordinance. So and just to provide a little bit of clarification, in the ordinance, it does state that the cost of administering appeals ranges from $938 to $1,835. And that's for administering appeals before the city council and the city's boards and commissions. Then there's this other element, this other paragraph that states for historic rezon, Mills Act, historic permits, historic survey reviews, and historic report reviews, that the amount of the city subsidy ranges from $3,117 to $4,422 per application. Right? So there's obviously, I think, a greater cost. But I'd argue that particularly for the historic reason, the Mills Act actions, I imagine that those individuals aren't from a a class that would require a fee waiver if they have the ability to do the work that's going to be required to go into that. And that might be a little bit of an assumption on my part, but I think that seems reasonable on that end for sure. Councilmember Hoffa.
Yeah, I I agree with Councilman Ed that we need the cost recovery, that it's not right to kind of cost shift to other taxpayers, and that it does sort of create an expectation if somebody's going to bring an appeal, they're very serious about it, if they're willing to pony up some money. So I'm fine with that. I do, I guess, and staff is asking for direction, so I'm prepared to to support this. But I I am interested in some kind of a hardship waiver, and I guess I kind of thought we had one. I could imagine it would work like this, that an appellant and and not, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, not not necessarily for this historic preservation fee, but for things like appeals to city council or planning commission. I received. If an appellant can show that they would qualify for low income housing within, say, the city's low income housing program, and they can provide documentation to sort of prove that, then I I wouldn't want to sort of exclude a class of people for whom it really would be a genuine hardship to to appeal some, you know, decision that could potentially be have been have been made wrong by the city. So I I'd like to see if there's some way we can do that. I don't know. And I guess for Chrissy, we could approve this, and that's something that you could come back with later.
Certainly, yes. If this is passed tonight, if if it's the pleasure of the council, we can return with a hardship waiver. The one we have in place for the administrative citation process is patterned off of the fee waivers utilized for the court system. So if you're going to file a lawsuit and you're in a certain income bracket or meet certain criteria, you might be eligible for a fee waiver. So we can certainly visit that if the council would like us to.
So public comments closed. We can't take that because we would have to open it up for everybody else. And I want to be respectful for everybody that's in the public. Any other questions or comments from the council? So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Actually, before I make the motion, do can we get consent? Do we need consensus on that last piece? Or is it can it be part of the motion? I don't want to mess with the second reading if.
It it could be a motion to pass the second reading of the ordinance and direct staff to return with hardship waiver options.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I'll make a motion to pass a staff recommendation, which is to approve the second reading and then request staff bring back the hardship options.
I'll second that.
Perfect. And then just in regards to timeline, how long do we think that it could come back? Just for a matter of perspective for for folks in the public.
On my end, it wouldn't take long. You know, the policy staff would be finance department, I believe. It wouldn't take much time on my end to prepare that.
In the middle of budget, so I have a lot of irons in the fire, but I'm I'm sure we'll bring it back before June.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other questions, comments from the council? All right, let's go ahead and do real call vote, please.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
That's a yes for me. Thanks for that discussion. Next, we'll move on to public hearing items. And I see we have the MCTID management plan modification. So pass staff presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this basically ends the existing MCT by June 30. And we have discussed in front of you a couple of times the new MCTID, which starts June, July 1st. So in front of you is basically the request to dissolve the MCTID by June 30. And that will present to you.
I think our city manager presented the report. This is very brief, but a quick overview here on what council already took a number of steps to adopt and approve a new TID, which if council decides tonight to end the existing 2019 TID effective June 30, the new district would then begin for a tenure term on July 1st of this year. Here is another reminder of the map and what the TID is all about. It's a new benefit assessment district that is assessed on lodging properties based on room night stays, anticipated to bring in district wide $8.86 million in the first year alone. There is no cost to the city, and the city of Monterey is the lead agency. And these funds would go towards marketing and sales efforts. So our recommendation for you this afternoon is to adopt the resolution of modification on the 2019 management district plan for the MCTID.
All right, beautiful. Thank you. We'll open up for, I'm sorry, are there any questions by the council? Okay, we will take it out to the public for public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item?
Concerning tourism, the planning of mass transit is abysmal. And I'm wondering what kind of inclusion do you have for mass transit? Because this peninsula now looks like Los Angeles. And your commitment to keep it Monterey is it doesn't show me that you're really doing that. You just seem to go along with everything. Well, you speak double double speak. And I'm very concerned about what this tourism entails as far as a mass transit plan that really works and gets the public out of their cars. So what is that? That's the question I'm asking you now. What is it?
So this is just public comment. There's no time for.
So we don't have a chance to get answers from you. We just.
You can ask the questions, and then after public comments are over, we can we can look at trying to get this.
Tom Raleigh, I think, Lorna, you need to take these comments MST. This is the wrong venue for the. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, we'll take it online.
No hands are raised at this time.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I I will just respond to the question. I I think that it is either MST or TMC are appropriate agencies to talk to about public transportation. The only funding that the city of Monterey provides regarding public transportation is the trolley that's used during the summer. Is there opportunities to expand that perhaps? And I don't think that that's the item presented in front of us tonight, so we can discuss that another time if that's. So so public comment, public comment is over. I'm just trying to answer the question. So so, you know, I I'm I'm just trying to let you know that this item is not directly, the item on the agenda is not regarding public transportation. And so I think that there's an opportunity to have that discussion at a later date, if if that's the will of the council. So any comments?
Comment.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, thank you very much. This falls into one of the categories that is, it's not cleanup. It's it's things that you have to do, because we have Monterey County Tourism Improvement District. It's a management district plan, and the term's supposed to end June 30, 2023. The ask here is, they were adjusting that date. The information is contained in here that's got a great report. I really encourage folks to to go back to this. The charts, graphs that are produced here give us a real strong snapshot of where the revenue comes through through the hospitality industry. And as we all know, I I just want to say it as a reminder, as we went into COVID, we saw what happened, and the city of Monterey was down $32 million during that period of time over two fiscal years. So the council knows this, staff knows this, and many members of the public know this, that we have to have revenue that is what generates the services in this community. I also want to go back to the staff. I get my fingers in my staff report to cooperate here. I wanted to go to the value drivers. Now, for some reason, my computer has frozen, and I'm not able to get to it.
Do you want the value drivers for this one?
The value drivers for this staff report, it's contained now.
So it's, please.
Serves as stewards of the city's financial resources through sound economic vitality efforts, streamlining operations, reasonable revenue enhancements, visionary long term planning, fiscal transparency, and community partnerships. And that is exactly the point with this is that it aligns with the responsibility. The value drivers say it, and it just makes sense. But I just want to make sure that folks go through the report and read it. It's fascinating to be able to see the impacts of TID and the management plan that's coming out of the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And pleased to serve this council on that board. And there's some really good work and some very strong analysis and marketing information that's part of the business side of what the city council has to do. So that's the only comment I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Anybody else? I'll I'll just thank you for your your representation on on MCCVB and representing the city of Monterey well on there. And thank you to our business partners for the great work. I mean, this is really going outside, I imagine, of of comfort zone, but also recognizing the need and the value in this investment. So many thanks to all of our business stakeholders in the community to come together and and help push this initiative forward. And with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Let's go ahead and do real call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes. After doing this for almost four months now, you would think I'm comfortable in doing this, and I'm still trying to figure it out. Okay, item, we'll go to public appearance items. Thanks, thank you again. Public appearance items, number seven, opposing taxpayer protection and government accountability act. And I will share that this was something that the council had approved last year when this came up, and it's rearing its ugly head again. And this is something that the California League of Cities is standing behind and pushing for because of obviously of concerns to do with our revenue and in return, the city services that we provide. So with that, I'll pass it to city management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That that was a perfect introduction. The item that we just passed with respect to the MCTID could could be reversed if if this measure would pass. So it's it's a pretty serious measure that 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 we are suggesting to vehemently oppose. And with that, I pass it on to our assistant city manager.
All right, thank you, Hans. As a recap, and and this was, this is being brought back because in the taxpayer protection and government accountability act, which is a little misleading, the title itself, was was eligible, or at least was what they call, I guess eligible for the November 2022 ballot, and instead was decided to be brought forward in November 2024 instead. So it may very well be on the ballot unless the proponents decide to withdraw this item. We're taking this before the city council early, because it does have significant impacts, not only to our city, but other cities throughout the state of California. And I'll provide a very brief overview on what this act is, its effect on the city's ability to generate revenue, and the current ballot measures that the council in the community has passed. So what is the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act? It would amend the California Constitution with a number of provisions that limit voters' authority and input. It would adopt some stricter rules for how taxes and fees are raised. It could make it more difficult to impose fines and penalties. It would shift fees and charges that are currently market based to below market rates by introducing a new legal standard on the definition of reasonable fees. There's a lot of uncertainty around what that means and how this act would affect fees that the city charges. And it is eligible, like I mentioned, for the ballot in November 2024. Some of the major impacts on fees and charges, the fees and charges, they may not exceed the actual cost. And the burden of proof on the fee or the charge would essentially be now changed to quote unquote clear and convincing evidence based on the ballot language. Fees and charges paid for the use of local and state government property that are currently market based would, as I mentioned earlier, be proved by clear and convincing evidence. So that essentially could change the standard that companies and others might have to pay for the use of local government property, which which we do have here in the the city of Monterey. Some of the major impacts on taxes, so taxes and fees that were adopted after January 1, 2022, in our case, Measure J, this is the cannabis tax, that don't comply with the new rules would essentially be voided unless they're reenacted. So that affects Measure J. It would also affect the Monterey County Tourism Improvement District, which council and and the community just adopted. It also would eliminate the ability of special tax measures that are proposed by citizen initiative to be enacted by majority voter approval. So that's, as as some of you know, some of the special tax measures can either be proposed by the council. It could also be proposed by citizens. This would affect those. It would require the tax measures include a specific duration of time. So they would all require some type of sunset date. Council could not no longer be able to implement tax measures that do not have a sunset date. And then it would also require voter approval to expand an existing tax to new territories such as annexation, so that would not apply to to those new newly acquired territory. How does it specifically affect Monterey? We talked about the cannabis tax, Measure J, voters just approved in November. That is estimated to be $13 million over 10 years. And then an unknown number of potentially lost revenue by other measures that the city of Monterey might want to adopt in the future. And we'll go through some of the existing sunset dates that are that exist with the city of Monterey's initiatives. It would also force the TID to end early. That would impact the $8.8 million annually for destination marketing. We'd essentially have to start that entire process all over again in a different way, adopt an ordinance and go through it another process. It's estimated by the League of California Cities that there is heightened legal peril for local government fees and charges statewide of over $20 billion. And that's one of the reasons why CalCities has pushed forward opposing this bill pretty pretty early with this initiative. So some of the fees and charges that could be affected, the cannabis tax, the nuisance abatement charges that find code enforcement, commercial franchise fees, emergency response fees, and costs for service that, one example, are the special event fees that our police department charges to for all the special events that take place at the fairgrounds, parking fees, harbor fees, campground, cemetery, and all the facility and use charges for parks, recreation, sports center, all of that could be affected through these new standards. So as we look at the city's measures, so there's Measure S. This is the special sales tax of one cent. That is set to renew in 2026 and would need to be approved by a two thirds super majority and contain a sunset date if that's renewed. Measure G, this is the half cent general sales tax adopted in 2020. That renewal, if is chosen to be renewed in 2029, would need to be approved by majority vote and contain a sunset date. Measure Y, this is the increasing the TOT rate, the hotel tax rate from 10% to 12%. There would not need to be a readoption necessary, because that was adopted prior to 2022. And Measure J, the cannabis tax, we would have to go. And measure J, the cannabis tax, we would have to go back to voters because measure J would essentially expire one year after the effective date. And that would have to be readopted in 2026.
Now, while you're on this slide, could you share us what? By not doing this, where would these fall? Right, so the measure S, you identified it would require two-thirds majority vote. Where, where does that stand now?
Right now, they would not be affected now. It's, what would affect is how we would renew it or if we decide or if council decides to, to extend measure S or put a new special sales tax in place in lieu of.
A better way maybe ask my question is if, let's say this measure doesn't pass.
If it, if it does not pass.
Doesn't pass, what would be the vote requirement for the extending measure S?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
When it says two-thirds super majority, they are talking, or we are talking about council majority, two-thirds super majority. So council needs to have four votes, but in the current system, it would only just be three votes for special tax.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
So some folks have asked, well, who is this California Business Roundtable? It's a group that is pushing the initiative. So folks know, a number of folks, Eli Lilly and company, Altria, known as kind of the Philip Morris, the new Philip Morris, if you will, Chevron, Union Pacific, Marathon Oil, ExxonMobil and Kilroy Realty. These are just some of the many large corporations that are supporting this initiative. And, and you know, our opinion is that some of these businesses don't understand the true impact that this initiative has on local government revenues and the ability for local governments like Monterey to generate revenue through, through tax measures that are fair, that gather voter feedback. And that provides services that everyone, businesses and residents alike rely on. And a number of organizations, the League of California Cities, which were a member opposes this initiative. City council, as Mayor Williamson mentioned, had opposed this initiative back in March 2022. And other, other groups as well, the California Special Districts Association, California State Association of Counties as well, all oppose this initiative. So your recommendation, the staff recommendation this afternoon is to adopt the resolution that reaffirms the city of Monterey's opposition to the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. This recommendation does focus on and is consistent with the value driver that we talked about just now and councilmember Smith did, which is serve as stewards of the city's financial resources. And we feel that this recommendation is appropriate.
Awesome. Thank you, Naff, for that. Any questions from the council?
Yep.
Okay, let's take it out to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item?
Thank you, Rick Aldinger. This time I'm speaking as chair of the Monterey County Hospitality Association. And I just want to let you know that MCHA fully supports the staff recommendation on this item. And it's, it's not just because of the TID. You know, we, we see this as really reducing the amount of local control that you all have and therefore we all have on what happens here in Monterey and Monterey County and the region. And for that reason, again, we fully support staff recommendation and urge you to continue up, continue your opposition to this, this act. Thank you.
So much.
Good afternoon again, Tom Rowley. I do support the MCHA support of supporting this opposition. I think in March of 2022, we're in the middle of the pandemic. So I don't think there was very adequate discussion when this was brought up by Hans the last time around. One of the problems with this is a little buried in there was a case called the Upland case, which was a court mandated elimination of the requirement for two-thirds vote for special taxes. For years after Prop 13 passed, it was a requirement for special taxes to have a two-thirds vote. This is carved out of a San Francisco case, and this gives a lot of people heartburn for special taxes. General taxes, as we know, for a long time, majority were approved and a lot of taxes were approved. Those that fit the standard that really needed to be done, special taxes were two-thirds. The court appointed and did this Upland case has allowed special taxes to be passed by less, by a majority vote. So this is, this is a case, this rule, this court ruled exception to Prop 13 has given a lot of people heartburn. Now, if you're in favor of more taxes and, you know, ability to be able to raise taxes as easy as possible, you know, yes, you want to, you want to support not supporting this. And I, you know, there's things in this thing that give me a lot of heartburn. One of my other extracurricular activities is the vice president of Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association. While I support generally the provision of adding the two-thirds vote requirement for special taxes, it's very hard to support this ballot measure. But you know, if, if worse came to, you know, push came to shove, I would suggest either taking a neutral position or no position. Let the voters decide on this. Let the league of cities come out in front, do whatever they need to do. But I'm hoping that there's going to be a change in this ballot measure and we get something more reasonable that will get rid of the Upland decision and reinstate the two-thirds for special taxes. We really need that. And the court carved out this exception and it's bad. And so this is what led, I'm sure, to producing this draft bill, draft initiative or drafted proposal to do away with it. So it's a tough position, but I think that wasn't discussed very much during the pandemic. But I think you've had a good discussion today, good explanation by assistant city manager. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carol Charbadian. I am a Monterey resident, Monterey business owner, and I chair the measure P and S Oversight Committee. So my precious, the sales tax that comes from when we're talking about the, those street storm drain sidewalks, it's important, it's imperative. And I urge you to follow staff recommendation. It, it will, we need to have some semblance of control over what the city is doing. And I would urge you, as I say strongly, to follow city, the staff recommendation to oppose it. Thank you so much.
Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item?
You know, as a taxpayer, I see taxes going up all the time. And to give you an example of the fee, you just voted on the appeals for higher fees according to the staff that you would have to, the staff work that would have to be done. Well, what if the planning department has made a real boo-boo, a real bad mistake that affects our environment like the Chomp project, which should not be approved? And that you say, oh, well, now we have to go back on your dime because we didn't bother to figure out how we're going to take away these 6,000 more daily trips. And we didn't figure out that. So you're not very fair. And your decision-making isn't very fair. And this is what makes me, as a taxpayer, want to vote for such measures. I totally understand that, yes, the city needs to do, to, to have these fees and these projects and, and more taxes. But you're not showing me that you're really being fair and honest when you make these decisions. And you didn't bring up that very important point. Well, what if the planning department isn't doing its job in protecting the environment and some poor person points that out? I have to pay thousands of dollars. So that's where this thing, I think, comes in handy. So I would hope if you're going to vote for this, make sure that you protect the taxpayer as well. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, we'll take it online.
Neither of our attendees' hands is raised at this.
All right, perfect. Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation and/or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, let's get us to sleep. We have a second and then we'll go to staff. A second. Okay, we have a second. All right, and we'll pass it to Hans.
I'll pass it to Chrissy. We, we just want to correct, the Upland decision is a little bit different than we understood differently than Mr. Rowley, shall we say.
Right, just a brief point of clarification so that the public and the council are clear. Presently, what's required is a two-thirds vote of voters voting in the election to pass the special tax measure. That's the law now. That would still be the law after this initiative, should it pass, takes place. All the Upland decision did was say that initiative measures, so if the citizens, as opposed to the city council, puts a measure, a special tax measure on the ballot, that, that did not require a two-thirds majority vote. So there's a big distinction there. So I, I just wanted to clarify, the Upland decision did not in any way, shape or form affect the two-thirds majority vote required for a special tax that's put on the ballot by the city council. And then finally, to address Ms. Moffett's statements about the fees, this initiative measure would not affect fees that are reasonably borne and reasonably related and reimbursement just for the services provided. And, and that's what the fees have been adopted to do pursuant to cost study. So.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification, Chrissy. Any questions or comments by the council?
Quick comment.
Absolutely. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I, I think that the taxpayers are protected when we have efficient government that does not have to redo things, remake things, undo wholesale systems, backup, retreat. And, and if this was a ballot measure that gets on the ballot and does pass in its current form, as is stated in the agenda report, this potentially has a cost every city in the state of California to the tune of $2 billion or maybe more. So if we're going to look at the, the overriding value system to say, deliver services efficiently, do them well and be responsive to our citizens who pay their taxes, I think that's the best way we can protect our taxpayers. Not to waste money, not have to retreat and redo and wholesale change just for change. We have multiple examples, and they were cited tonight, and I'll just leave you with two. Measure X, Monterey County Tax Initiative that is fixing our roads and has a tremendous impact to all cities in the, in the county of Monterey, past two-thirds. Measure P, measure S, past two-thirds. And a two-thirds threshold is very, very difficult to get to. So it's about transparency, truthfulness and letting the vote, voters decide. But I just don't see the merits of this potential ballot measure helping government be better. I think it actually does the opposite of that. And so that, that's my twist on how we make sure that we are serving our taxpayers and our community better. And that's deliver efficient government and don't waste dollars.
Well said. And with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
That's a yes for me. Thanks to everybody that commented on that one. And with that, we will go to council comments.
I don't have any comments. Just say it's good to be back. Was gone out of the city of Monterey for about 14 days. And there's no place like home. Even Disneyland is not the greatest place on earth compared to Monterey. Good to be home. Yeah.
Councilmember Robert.
No comment.
Okay, beautiful. With that, city manager reports.
April is National Earthquake Month, so there will be a lot of public service announcements. And before we went into the session, there was a small earthquake shaking somewhere close by, I heard. Also, Canary Row Days are still going on, a larger event on April 15. And just to report back, we had sold out spring break sport camps in the, for two weeks, sold out, including having large waiting lists. So we are hopeful to have a lot of folks coming back to our summer camps this year. And last but not least, in case you, you wondered last weekend that the bunny hop was very successful as well.
It's really important. Awesome. And, and I would actually use the time to say too, that we, our next council meeting, we will be discussing the housing policies that I think it would be a good time to just use as a public service announcement. So if folks are interested in that, April 18th is going to be a good discussion around some potential housing policies. Public comments for items on closed session. Enclosed session is litigation for Richard Rosendale case. Anybody in the chamber wish to make comments on this closed session agenda item? Okay, anybody online?
No, no hands raised.
Perfect. All right. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.